Good afternoon. I am Trinay Striggs, the School Board Chair and administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach. Virginia is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on the fourteenth day of March 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board through live streaming on It's broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Chair Striggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Morton, and Ms. Melnick.
Thank you. So we're going to start right off with A for... Before we do that, well, this is the Administrative Matters and Reports, and there are several things that we want to talk about today. First, I'm going to be passing around the information. It's the SBA Spring, the 2023 V.SBA Spring Networking Forum. It'll be held at Smithfield High School this year on April 24th at 5:00 PM. The registration fee is $15 per person, which includes dinners, the dinner, and the deadline for registration is April 6, 2023. And our School Board Clerk will handle the cost of that for the registration. So what I'm going to do is pass around this sheet, and you can look at your calendars and check yes or no. If you're not sure, please let her know, obviously, before the 6th. And basically, what this is, is the SBA Spring Network Forum. Each region, and we're the Tidewater Region, has a spring forum. And this includes Portsmouth City, Southampton County, Suffolk City, Surrey County, Sussex County, Virginia Beach City, Williamsburg, James City County, and North Hampton County and Pecoson City and York County. Oh, wait a minute, there's some others. There's more. Akimak County, Chesapeake City, Franklin City, Hampton City, Isle of Wight County, Newport New City, Norfolk City, and Pecoson City. So what we do is, and there is an agenda, so you'll be able to see it when I pass it around. I'm not going to read the agenda. You can read that for yourself. And they also have an art contest. So we will have art selections from our schools that our Art Coordinator, Ms. Hester, has... She's already evaluated them with her students. Actually, it was on the 28th, was during our last School Board meeting that they went to MOCO because they were displaying at the MOCO art contest then. So that's where they chose which ones they would present and have in this contest. And we've done pretty well through the years in Virginia Beach because we have some great artists. So this is great. It's... And several of us get together and have our carpool so we can drive over there because it's, you know, it's a little jaunt to Smithfield. So look at the agenda. It's very worth going. And if you have any questions, ask us and we'll help you out. So I'm going to go to my right first and then if you'll pass it back over there. The second thing I want to talk about is... I had it up on my phone. Let me see if I can get it back. Um... I want to say Mrs. Natalie, but it's not Mrs. Natalie. Ms. Allen sent this to me, and I've been so busy going to so many great places today that I haven't had a chance to read this until just before we started. So, but I wanted to share this with you because I think it's very important. "Virginia Beach is seeking public input," the city, "on future election systems. Listening sessions scheduled." And so the City of Virginia Beach is partnering with Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at UVA to hold a series of listening sessions from March 24th through April 1st. These listening sessions stem from the reverse of the 10-1 system put in by the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia. The Virginia Beach City Council must decide whether to stay with this 10-1 system or consider alternative election systems in time for the 2024 election cycle. Residents will have the opportunity to give their input on the city's election system and how they elect their representatives. A series of virtual and in-person meetings have been scheduled at multiple locations throughout the city. And it starts March 25th on Saturday at 6:30 at Bayside Rec Center. And then Sunday, March 26th is the virtual one. The in-person one will be at the Bayside, and then they have it March 26th for that district virtually. I'm going to also post... We'll post this on our website, please, and I will send it also to all of our Board members so you'll have that. But I don't want to read through all of them. But we're going to put it on our website for the listeners out there so you will know about this. And the city is also going to be putting them out there as well. I don't know where they're going to. I know this was Wavy TV. Ms. Allen, do you know of any?
I have it.
Well, I've got the places, but...
I have it from the vbgov.com.
Okay.
So it's on their website, and there's going to be direct mail to each individual household as well. So they're really getting it out there.
Okay. So yeah, thank you.
Of course.
So people that are listening, please know that you will be getting something in the mail about this because this is really important for them to get your input on these elections, for our local elections, for the City Council and the School Board. Okay? And if you have any questions, let me know. But this will go out. We'll also put it on our website, and I'll also send it to the School Board members so you'll have it. Okay? Are there any other administrative... Yes, Ms. Owens?
And I'm not sure if this is an administrative matter for discussion, but I want to have, I guess, transparency with the... Recently, we had email, a series of emails in regards to a concern, allegation of an assault at First Colonial High School. My understanding is that there was never a student identified, but I want to... My understanding from Ms. Lanetti is that it's not something that could be closed session because it doesn't concern a specific student or a specific staff member. And given what we've seen in other districts, I guess Loudoun or Fairfax or wherever that was before, with concern about investigation not being completed and thorough, I wanted to try and understand if our investigation has been completed and closed. Is it accessible to the Board? And if there are further concerns with that, kind of what the steps are in terms of the Board discussing and being on the same page on how those things are handled.
Ms. Lanetti?
What we were looking at was the Title IX, what we believe to be the potential Title IX complaint that was out there. We had received an email from a citizen, and we're looking into further information as to whether we could identify the individuals that might have been involved in the complaint. Based on that, we did contact the... We, being the Title IX Coordinator, contacted the citizen who was not willing to give us the name of the individual who was the... Allegedly knew about the incident that may or may not have happened. That person pointed us to another person who might know that name, that we talked to that person. None of these individuals have given us the name of the person who might... Who heard the alleged allegation that something misconduct had happened. So we've been waiting for someone to provide that. In the meantime, the school has definitely taken actions to speak with its staff, to see whether anybody was aware of this incident, whether there was a report that anything had been done. We've had no staff member come forward indicating that they were aware of this event. So what normally happens with the Title IX complaint, at a certain point, if you have insufficient information, you will have to close it or dismiss it. Not that it didn't happen. We simply don't have anything to go on. In this incident, we have no name of a student. We have no date. We have no location other than possibly the school. We have no perpetrator. So we have not been able, as the School Administration, going to further... I'm not sure if Dr. Spence can comment any further on this, but I don't believe that they formally closed it out, but they will have to close it out at some point because we simply have no further information. Yeah, Dr. Spence.
I don't have anything further to add. We haven't closed it formally. We're still waiting to see if we can identify the individual who brought the... The sort of secondary individual who brought the concern forward to the citizen who reported it to us.
And that it is unusual in these situations, particularly Title IX. We usually have a victim or somebody's observed something actually come forward and tell us so we could do that. It puts us in a difficult situation where we don't have enough information to go in. If it really, what the alleging really happened, that is something we need to address. But we simply, we have no one to speak to. We have no evidence so we can go forward. So what will eventually happen is the Title IX Coordinator will have to close it, and we'll just have to wait to see if somebody comes forward with the information.
And I guess at this point, I can wait until the Title IX investigation is officially closed. I have some thoughts or concerns, but it may not be valid or relevant at this point until I can see that completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens and Ms. Lanetti. Is there anybody else or anything else that... Okay, let me just let you be aware that there'll be a couple of things on the agenda for tonight on the major, the regular School Board meeting, that will be changing. And that will be... We'll be taking off the... On the consent agenda, I think it's 14. The motion for... The resolution for opiate settlement class action, we'll be taking that off because we did pass it in February, and that the Attorney General has said that that was sufficient, that we passed the correct word.
Yes, ma'am. We received word from the city. The city thought we had adopted a resolution, didn't have the right terminology. And I got a call from the Attorney General's office about an hour or so ago, who confirmed that what we did pass in February was correct. So we do not need the corrected resolution. That would be improper. So what we've done is fine. We just need to remove it from the consent agenda.
So I'll make that announcement upon the dais as well. And then the other thing that we're going to add for 15 for action, 15B, the Ad hoc Workforce Development Committee, we're going to be adding that for action. We'll be discussing it if you need to discuss it, and we'll probably have Ms. Williams talk about that. And then we will have a vote on that as well. All right. So we're going to move on to A, I mean B, Advancement via Individual Determination. Our Avid presentation, and I have to add, it was fantastic. I was there today. Thank you. Dr. SJ invited me, and so I was there and got to go around with the team and see all the wonderful things that our kids and our faculty is doing. It's just... I have to add that we do want to see this added as a... What do you call it? Walk-around? And I know they have one at Great Neck and they have one at Salem, but I thought maybe we could split them up and we could... Some could go to either one or whatever. But I think this is something we all need to see because a lot of people don't know what Avid is. You will after Dr. ... I want to say first name. I want to say the first name always, and so I forget your last names. Dr. Smith is going to share with us. But Avid is a fantastic program, and it was so funny because when we were going around and they were sharing it, I'm like, I used to do that. And I didn't teach Avid. I taught middle school. But there were some things that, you know, you guys did in this Avid program, and I'm like, wow, with organization and stuff like that. I'm like, I used to do that. My kids did my class. So it was really good to see all of that and what it does and to hear the kids and the staff. Fantastic. So this will knock your socks off, everybody.
Thank you for that plug. Good evening, Chairwoman Striggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, Dr. Spence, and members of the School Board. I am Jim Smith, Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools from the Department of School Leadership. This evening, we're excited to present a high-level view of Avid, which stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. During this presentation, we will make key connections to Avid and encompass the 2025, specifically our Strategic Action Agenda. We'll provide an overview of Avid and its history in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and we will share current and future Avid professional learning opportunities. Also joining me this evening are members of the Avid Leadership Team, special guests, and our Avid National Team who joined us this evening. So we're happy to have them here with us as well. Presenting this evening will be Ms. Natalie Rigs. At this time, I'll call Natalie up, and at the end of the presentation, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Isn't that what I said?
Rigs.
Oh, Natalie Meigs. My name's Jim Smith.
You helped me out, Jim. Thank you so much.
I've been called worse, so... Okay. Good evening, Chairwoman Striggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, Dr. Spence, and members of the School Board. I am Natalie Meigs, Coordinator of Military Connected Academic Support Programs, and thank you for this opportunity to share information about Avid. Avid is a system-wide approach to teaching and learning that fosters equitable access to educational resources and experiences required for students to successfully engage in a future of possibility. Through writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, also known as WICER, it equips teachers with research-based best practices to meet the needs of their students. But before we dive into this presentation, I would like you to take a moment to take a peek in of Avid in action throughout BBCPS right now.
Avid is for everyone, and it instills those skills that they will need for the future.
Avid is hope. That is the main thing that we give to our kids.
Avid is important because we have some students who are not aware that there is so much potential that lies within their future.
Avid ensures that the students are always reaching for the highest mark possible. Avid is for the middle student. Well, in every school, 70% to 75% is the middle student.
We believe in the guidelines of WICER, that's writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And so throughout our lessons and throughout our studies and everything that we present to our students embodies that.
We help kids develop some of these tools that will help them be successful in the future.
I'm creating a foundation for the students and planting seeds in these students' minds, preparing them to think about their future.
We do note-taking that everyone has to do, organizing your time, organizing yourself. All of these things and these skills that we have in Avid can be used in any field.
The students come from different backgrounds. They have different experiences. Avid ensures that they are meeting those challenges with the utmost strength, growth mindset, and ensuring that they are able to get to the next level.
We want to make sure that our kids, when they graduate, they are either enrolled in college, they are enlisted in the military, or they are employed. Avid can help them with all of those things.
With the Avid tools, you can be whatever you want.
We're teaching you how to learn, how to learn, and when you're able to do that, there's no job you can't do.
So Avid is the vehicle for supporting schools in fostering a positive work environment and providing opportunities for collaborative problem-solving to ensure that all students are prepared to pursue their post-secondary pathway of enrollment, enlistment, or employment. It directly aligns with our Strategic Action Agenda in that it advances educational equity by engaging educators in professional learning to access resources that positively impact student access and outcomes. It leverages integrated systems of support by providing intentional opportunities for data-informed decision-making to strengthen that Tier One instruction. And it creates future-ready students by leveraging WICER to design learning experiences with students that emphasize the foundational skills of literacy and numeracy, interdisciplinary thinking, real-world learning, and a connection to student interest and future-oriented goals. Avid's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. It is our why, and it grounds us in our work towards Compass to 2025. It directly aligns to our mission in Virginia Beach City Public Schools with specific emphasis on closing the opportunity gap and ensuring all students are future-ready. The Avid College and Career Readiness Framework, or CCR, provides a pathway to provide how educators can support all students. Whether a student's pathway is to enroll, enlist, or become employed, students must develop essential skills so their future is by design and not default. The top of the CCR is what students need: rigorous academic preparedness, opportunity knowledge, and student agency. We know students need rigorous academic preparedness to develop skills so they can successfully complete rigorous college and career preparatory curriculum experiences. Students also need opportunity knowledge that allows students to research opportunities, set goals, make choices that support their long-term aspirations, and successfully navigate transitions to the next level. Student agency is evident when students believe in themselves and act intentionally to build relationships, persist through obstacles, and activate their academic, social, emotional, and professional knowledge and skills to reach their full potential. The foundation of the CCR is what educators do to intentionally support students in pursuing their post-secondary pathway. Teachers and other adults in the school play an important role to student access. To bring about transformation, educators must insist on rigor, break down barriers, align the work, and advocate for students. It is important to note that relational capacity frames the work of the CCR, establishing connection among individuals built on respect, trust, and authenticity. There are explicit connections to the BBCPS Future-Ready Student and Avid's CCR framework. Sites leverage WICER research-based strategies to provide rigorous, relevant, and real-world learning opportunities. A meaningful plan for post-secondary pursuits provides opportunity knowledge to all students through accountable talk, metacognition, student-led conferences, exhibitions of learning, and exploration of college and career opportunities. Student-centered works of substance and a signature experience promotes student agency. In short, this framework provides educators with a systematic approach to focus on rigorous instruction, insist on access and equity for all students, align work to a common vision, and believe in students' potential to accelerate student learning and outcomes. Avid accelerates student learning and advances educational equity by empowering educators to take collective action to impact learning for all students by establishing a supportive culture. Rigorous expectations are established through integrated systems of support, Tier One instruction, to enable high engagement, teaching, and learning practices to be implemented to promote critical inquiry. Collaboration is nurtured in all classrooms to foster student agency so students are future-ready and can take ownership of their own learning. The Coaching and Certification Instrument is a tool to help schools successfully implement the Avid elective as the foundation of a successful Avid system while also monitoring Avid school-wide implementation in order to benefit all students. It is organized into four sections that correspond to the four Avid school-wide domains: Instruction, Systems, Leadership, and Culture. And it provides coaching to educators on a campus of what they can do to empower students with the knowledge and skills to take charge of their own education. This school-wide approach helps us integrate best practices in every classroom and provide opportunities for all students. I would now like to share with you how Avid began providing opportunities throughout BBCPS. Avid began in 1980 when Mary Catherine Swanson, an English teacher at Claremont High School in San Diego, began working with a class of 32 students, based on the belief that if the students were willing to work hard, she could teach them the skills that they needed to be college-ready. Fast forward to 2000, and BBCPS implements Avid in eighth grade at Kemsville Middle School. The purpose for implementing Avid at Kemsville Middle School was to provide a pathway for students in the academic middle to succeed in rigorous curriculum in order to become educated and responsible participants and leaders in society. In 2007, ninth-grade Landstown Avid students participated in the first pilot of freshman students in the state taking Advanced Placement Human Geography or Advanced Placement European History. It was determined that through the Avid elective class, students would receive the support to excel in more rigorous courses. It is now common practice for ninth-grade students across Virginia Beach City Public Schools, the state, and the country to gain access to the most rigorous courses offered as a ninth grader. From 2000 to 2013, we continue to expand implementation in 14 secondary schools. 2014 also led to the implementation of four elementary schools through a $1.5 million grant awarded by the Department of Defense Education Activity to ease transitions for military-connected students. 2015, we began to strategically develop those K-12 Avid feeder patterns. 2017, the first Avid Professional Learning Workshop, or APLW, was hosted to support Great Neck and Salem Middle School, increase the number of Avid-trained staff as both sites engaged in the Avid National Demonstration Process. In the spring of 2019, Great Neck and Salem Middle School were validated as Avid National Demonstration Schools, which are exemplary models of the Avid College Readiness System. Avid National Demonstration Schools undergo a rigorous validation process and are required to be revalidated every three years to ensure the high levels of implementation with quality and fidelity to Avid's strategy school-wide. I am proud to share that Great Neck and Salem Middle School have successfully completed their revalidation to continue on as being National Demonstration Schools for Avid Avid National Demonstration Sites are centers of teaching and learning that also serve as models for those interested in learning about the Avid College Readiness System. It is important to highlight that there are approximately 8,000 Avid schools internationally. 216 of these schools are Avid National Demonstration Schools, which is less than 1%. In Virginia, we have four National Demonstration Schools, with two of them being right here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Great Neck and Salem. During the 2020-2021 school year, a strategic focus was placed on During the 2020-2021 school year, a strategic focus was placed on expanding Avid to our remaining secondary schools in Virginia Beach. In the fall of 2021, we added an Avid coach who was a certified Avid staff developer. The Avid coach is responsible for utilizing the Avid school-wide system to support school-wide implementation through professional learning, coaching, and community outreach. In 2021, district leadership was offered an opportunity to participate in Avid district-wide strategic planning, which is grounded in the Avid College and Career Readiness Framework. District Avid informs strategic planning and resource allocation to establish the beliefs and infrastructure needed to ensure college and career readiness for all students. Members of the VBCPS Avid District-wide Strategic Planning Team participated in four-hour modules, which are a combination of professional learning, team processing, and development. This team continues to meet to leverage Avid to serve all students. The 2022-2023 school year has allowed our VBCPS Avid family to reconnect and offer a variety of professional learning and coaching opportunities. Professional learning has been offered to intentionally support implementation of Avid systems. Principals have engaged in monthly Avid professional learning through Middle School League. Administrators, school counselors, and teachers have participated in three Virginia Beach City Public Schools Avid Key Implementers Community of Practice. And four Avid Professional Learning Workshops were hosted, providing professional learning for over one hundred and fifty educators this year. Avid Professional Learning Workshops, or APLWs, is a two-day training that provides high engagement, professional learning, and resources for classroom teachers and building leaders. It is designed for educators to support all students to reach their full potential. APLW immerses educators in WICR strategies and methodologies in order to learn how to focus instruction, leadership, systems, and culture to strategically improve the performance of all students. Through knowledge and practical applications modeled during APLWs, educators learn to leverage their students' backgrounds and experiences to master content in a more personal way. APLWs allow educators to gain the experience to support all students in developing the skills and confidence to conquer their post-secondary pathway. The structure of APLWs equips educators with an instructional toolkit of Tier One strategies to immediately return to the classroom and support all students. It is important for Virginia Beach... Excuse me, I'm sorry. It is important for Virginia Beach City Public Schools to continue to build our capacity through Avid Center and district professional learning opportunities as national data has shown that Avid-trained educators accelerate the development of relational capacity among staff and students, resulting in higher levels of collective educator agency, higher academic achievement and student agency, and thriving learning environment school-wide. VBCPS is fortunate to currently have three Avid staff developers, and we are excited that three more educators will be certified as Avid staff developers at the end of the 2023 Avid Summer Institute season. This will allow Virginia Beach City Public Schools to continue to expand our capacity to provide differentiated, content-based professional learning for all educators. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Willie, who are also part of our Avid staff developer team. Dwight Robinson is an Avid coach, and he became a staff developer in 2013 for Avid. Mr. Robinson is certified to facilitate Avid elective implementing, Avid elective tutorials, and coaching, creating, engaging, and rigorous classrooms. Ms. Laura Willie, Avid coach, became a staff developer in 2015 for Avid. Mrs. Willie is certified to facilitate Avid elective tutorials, instructional coaches and elective educators, and history and social sciences. I became a staff developer in 2020. I am certified to facilitate instructional coaches and elective teachers and also digital teaching and learning. Now that you have had an opportunity to hear about Avid implementation and VBCPS, I would like to turn it over to Avid educators and students who will each share their personal experience of the impact of Avid has had on their lives. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Lovejoy and Ms. Purvis, who are current VBCPS teachers. We have Mr. White, an eighth-grade Avid student, Ms. Thomas Bly, Mr. Hicks and Ms. Godamo, who are Avid seniors in our district. Mr. Lovejoy.
Good evening, Chairperson Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I am Taylor Lovejoy, teacher from Great Neck Middle School. It is an honor and a privilege to speak to you tonight about a program for which my passion has no end: Avid. In expressing the impact Avid has had on my career, I could easily discuss the various achievements I have experienced due to my involvement in Avid. But I believe the most definitive evidence of Avid's impact on my career is how it saved it. Six years ago, I came to Virginia Beach due to my wife earning a promotion at her company, Automatic Data Processing, ADP. At that time, I had six years of teaching experience at the high school level, but I was worn out. During our move, I often questioned, "Should I stay in teaching? Is it worth it?" I decided to give it one more go around in the classroom and landed a job at Great Neck Middle School. However, in the first few months, I still found myself worn out. I began searching for and interviewing for other jobs, and going into that winter break, I was unsure of how it would turn out that year. On our first two days back from break, I was told to attend an Avid Professional Learning Workshop, APLW, with our very own Laura Willie, and skeptically, I'm sorry to admit, I thought, "Great, another professional development session, just what I need." It was exactly what I needed. After an amazing two-day session, I found myself re-energized and reimagining the classroom. I was back. I was bought in. Now, not many people know this, but a week after that training, I was offered a job by my wife's company, ADP, as an instructional learning designer. More money, more flexibility, better hours, you'd be a fool to say no. Well, you can all call me a fool because I've declined that. I've actually declined this job twice because in January of 2022, without an interview, they called back and offered the position again. I declined once again because I love what I do, and that is thanks to Avid. Simply put, I would not be here today without Avid. I would like to thank you for your time to listen to my impact statement on Avid and how it's impacted my career. I would like to now hand it over to Ms. Purvis.
Good evening, Dr. Spence, Chairwoman Riggs, and Vice Chair Weems. Good evening to all members present on the board and everyone present in the room today. My name is Michaela Purvis, and I am a former Avid student who now teaches second grade at White Oaks Elementary School. Go Dragons! I am an Avid believer in Avid advancement via individual determination. As a product of the VBCPS school system, I always had teachers that absolutely poured greatness into me. They wanted to see me excel. They pushed me. They challenged me, even when I felt like I couldn't go on myself. They never focused on my personal weaknesses, but rather they sought various avenues to hone in on how they could strengthen where I was weak. I was extremely active in high school. I mean, I tried to make the best of those four years. I was in SCA. I was in varsity cheerleading. I was in clubs. I mean, if it was a sign-up sheet, I was there. I knew I wanted to go to college, however, I was just uncertain about so much. I was introduced to Avid in tenth grade, and I was skeptical because I truly thought, "What do I need from a college prep class? I'm not a senior. I'm not graduating this year. What do I need?" But very little did I know that Avid was about to change my life. My mom, Tisha Sanders, was then an Avid teacher who loved the program so much, and I saw how her students absolutely adored her and the relationships she fostered with them. So I thought, "Hmm, okay, I'll give it a try. Sure." I'm glad I did because let me tell you, I had an amazing teacher named Dwight Robinson, or affectionately known as Coach Rob. And he really brought out the best in me. He fostered the perfect learning environment for student success, productivity, and a successful Avid program. It was in Avid that I finally found my voice. I was an introvert in high school, but in Avid, I was able to voice my opinions in a community environment while having the support of my Avid teacher, my Avid peers, and meaningful discourse. Avid truly has so many benefits and provides a plethora of opportunities for all involved. Students are afforded opportunities to visit colleges, be granted free college applications. They get to engage in free tutoring, learn organizational skills, and just so many other opportunities that the average student is truly not afforded. Now, as a classroom teacher, I'm able to apply many of the strategies that I benefited from personally in Avid. That includes but is not limited to anchored charts in my classroom where students can look around and reference what we've learned, collaboration opportunities with all of my students, where students are able to work together and form peer groups to share ideas. We do quick writes. We do reflections on writing, and we even have organizational strategies. What I experienced and learned in Avid has taken me far beyond college and into my career as a teacher. Avid is a great program that I was privileged to be a part of, and I would like to thank each of you, but before I go, I would like to welcome Mr. Brody White.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brody White, and I'm an eighth-grade Avid student at Salem Middle School. I've been in Avid since sixth grade, and I'm happy to be here today to talk about how Avid has helped me with middle school. Avid has helped me achieve something other than giving me work. Avid has helped me with reading, writing, and critical thinking skills as well as deeper content knowledge. I've been influenced by most by Avid by showing me different colleges and universities myself. Organized Avid has taught me how to keep myself organized by keeping track of my homework with daily use of my planner and how to be prepared. Most important, it has shown me how to be respectful to others. Respectful to others, help people, and to always follow directions with the use of collaborative study groups and tutorials. I have found that working together is always better than alone, especially when it comes to tracking harder questions and misunderstanding for my class. My Avid teacher along with my content teachers have also taught me how to take focus notes. Taking focus notes, taking notes this way, has helped me be organized and stay updated with my content classes. My Avid teacher cares about me, and she is, along with my other teachers, they really strive to prepare me for my future ahead. My teachers are willing to give me their full attention and actually want to help me to do better in their class and achieve success. Avid is much more than a class. It opened my eyes to the opportunities I have after middle school and high school. Because of Avid, I am future-ready. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Kaia Thomas Bly.
Good afternoon. My name is Kaia Thomas Bly, and I'm a senior in the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kemsville High School. I also attend the ATC for web design. I am excited to have this opportunity to tell you about myself and my Avid experience. My Avid journey started when I was accepted into Avid at Salem Middle School in seventh grade. I applied to Avid because I knew Avid would help me improve my grades and prepare me for high school. In Avid that first year, I learned a lot about inquiry. Through tutorials, I became better at asking questions that were helpful in understanding class material. The tutorial process also supported me at the end of the year as I prepared for my SOLs. One of the opportunities that we had in Avid was guest speakers. Ms. Timlin, the coordinator of the EBA, visited our classroom, and after hearing her presentation, I knew Kemsville was for me. With help from my Avid and English teachers, I applied to the EBA and was accepted into the class of 2023. Freshman year in Avid, we worked on interpersonal skills and time management. Knowing both of these helped me adjust to being in an academy. When COVID hit in the middle of that year, the skills Avid taught me were put to the test. Being able to take my notes on my own and use study tools I learned in Avid, I was able to maintain my grades and stay on the college path. Sophomore year was the dreaded hybrid year. Even though we were online, the standards of the Avid students still remain the same. I continued to excel academically and challenged myself juggling AP courses, activities, and sports. I also earned several Microsoft certifications and became interested in applying to the Advanced Technology Center in support of my track on the EBA of business and technology. Junior year began, and I started attending the Advanced Technology Center. Using the organizational skills I learned in Avid, I was able to balance going to two schools while also keeping up with sports, clubs, and activities and taking on a new job. Interviewing for the jobs was not as stressful as you might think because in Avid, we worked on soft skills such as communication and presentation skills. I felt confident in both answering and asking questions. And yes, I'm happy to report I got the job. It was a great year, and I was excited about what senior year would hold. However, before senior year started, I took a look at my schedule, and I realized I wasn't going to be able to take Avid because I still needed two credits to receive my advanced diploma. I was heartbroken, and I didn't know what to do. Thankfully, my amazing Avid teacher, Ms. Kimberly Nurse, was able to help me. With her by my side, we figured out how to create a schedule that not only gave me space for my required courses in the EBA and ATC, but allowed me to remain in Avid. The plan was to continue taking summer classes, as I had been doing since I was in eighth grade, and pick up two virtual Virginia courses. I knew it wasn't going to be easy, but I was determined to stay in Avid with my Avid family. It's that important to me. You see, Avid has been the consistency I needed throughout all of my school career. I not only learned academic skills in Avid, but I found the support and network I needed to keep me on track to being the first in my family to attend college. Speaking of college, I was accepted into Elizabeth City State University, Voorreest University, Virginia State University, Norfolk State University, Virginia Union, and North Carolina Central. I am happy to announce this fall I will be attending Clark Atlanta. Go Panthers! I have achieved my goal of enrolling as first-generation college student, and I know with my hard work and all the lessons I've learned in Avid, I will become the first-generation college graduate. Thank you for your time. I'd like to turn this over to Jaden Hicks.
Good afternoon. My name is Jaden Hicks, and I am a student. I'm a senior at Landstown High School. Ever since I was young, I wanted to make my mom and my family proud. They've sacrificed so much for me, and I wanted nothing more than to show them that all they've done and all they've sacrificed was paying off. I knew that I wanted to go to college from a very young age, but I didn't know how. Avid was that way. Going into middle school, I joined Avid from the young grade of sixth grade. I've been in Avid for seven years, and they've really created a foundation of note-taking and studying. When I got into high school, they taught me who I am and what I am in learning. They really helped me discover how I learn best and what I need to do to retain information. This last year, Avid focused mainly on getting ready to apply for colleges, like the FAFSA and resumes. They've really helped me in creating this foundation and making sure I was ready for college. This upcoming year, I've applied to many different schools, and I watched as my friends got into different colleges. For some, that would leave you very discouraged, but it empowered me and made me feel more ready to get accepted. I'm happy to say that I've been accepted to UNT, Hampton University, VCU, ODU, and NSU, many colleges that I never thought I'd get into. Avid has also provided me unique opportunities like the ACT and SAT, which they provided free for me. Sorry. I would not be able to have this opportunity if it was not for Avid and how they prepared me. Thank you for your time. I now introduce Naomi Godamo.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Vice Chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and all board members. My name is Naomi Godamu, and I'm a senior at Lanstown High School. In nineteen ninety-one, my parents came from Ethiopia to give their children a better life, but more importantly, a better education. At a young age, I didn't understand the gravity of that. Leaving everything and everyone you've known and uprooting your entire life just for someone you didn't even know existed yet. As I got older, I realized how much they sacrificed for me and my siblings, and I knew that I had to do everything I can to make what my parents did worth it. The FAFSA, SAT, and Common App were all foreign words to everyone in my household. The difference between a subsidized and an unsubsidized loan was like a different language to my immigrant family. However, I never felt these differences between me and my peers, until everyone's parents were applying for FAFSA's and SATs. Instead of joking around about my family and my ignorance, I was anxious for the future that I felt clearly unprepared for. When I was ten years old, I was first introduced to Avid in fifth grade. The truth is, I only joined Avid to make friends, but little did I know, making friends wouldn't be the only thing that I did. Writing TRFs and organizing binders until my fingers went numb were the main points of my middle school Avid experience. The first assignment in my sixth grade Avid class was to shake the hands of all my teachers and introduce myself. Shake a couple hands, say a couple words to some random teachers. So trivial. To let to eleven-year-old Naomi, this seemed like a waste of my time. But in my senior year of high school, I continued to introduce myself to my new teachers every year. This simple yet influential task made me realize how special Avid is. The impact Avid continued to make on my life is what made me stay in this amazing program. Unlike an AP course, in Avid, we aren't competing with each other to get the highest grade on the final exam. It is also not a useless class that students sleep through. Avid is a group of students. No, it's a family. All working and uplifting each other towards a common goal, college and career readiness. Although Avid can be stressful, the class put me years ahead of everyone else in my college application process. I knew how to build my resume, have adult conversations, and have an impressive work ethic. Through Avid, I complete I'd completed my FAFSA early enough to receive more than fourteen thousand dollars towards my college tuition and a free college tour at my dream school, Virginia Tech. Virginia Tech is the school I'm attending in the fall, but I was also accepted into Virginia Commonwealth University and Old Dominion University, all thanks to Avid. Now, in the second semester of my senior year, the difference between a subsidized and an unsubsidized loan is no longer a different language. I don't feel unprepared, and I know that what I've done made my parents' decision to leave Ethiopia worth it. Thanks to Avid, I have the opportunity to attend my dream school and received more than fourteen thousand dollars towards my college tuition. And up next, Ms. Meigs will be closing us out. Thank you.
Some awesome students we have in our Avid system here. Thank you, Mr. Lovejoy, Ms. Purvis, Brody, Kaida, Jaden, and Naomi. This concludes our presentation for you all, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. Can you go back?
Can I go back and do it again?
Absolutely. We're lifelong learners.
Ms. Melnick?
So, I was at a middle school yesterday, and I want to say I was told that this is going to be everywhere. Is that it's this is school-wide, system-wide?
Yes, so we do have at the secondary level an Avid elective course, which is a course that students apply to get into. Uh, but through the Avid coaches, uh, there we're training teachers across all secondary schools. Uh, during the demonstration, uh, revalidation process today, they had Avid elective students and Avid school-wide students, and validators didn't know the difference. So our goal is to spread it school-wide, uh, so that every student, uh, feels prepared and in college-ready. I will say that that training that we do, the the APLWs that that Mrs. Meigs talked about, is critical to our process, and we've had many teachers, uh, that have sent emails uh, to to Mrs. Meigs and the other coaches saying, I thought this was something else, another add-on, but have gone right back to the school and have jumped in and started using CSGs and some of the other strategies.
That's great.
So we're using the strategies across the board.
And as the mother of a student who, look, you see me, I'm a notebook girl. I love my my binders. I like things to be organized, and I was the mom of a kid who kept papers in a bookbag, and it drove me nuts. So I love it. I love the organization. I love the program, and kudos to you all.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and as a mother of a child who did the college process on her own because she knew what she was doing, she did not understand the difference between those loans, and after she graduated, she got a really nice hefty bill. And she's like, I thought that was this. I'm like, no. So, boy, I wish she would have had that training. Oh, my goodness. Um, I would say great. Well, my question was kind of the same, like, how many kids are getting in these classes and how many are on the waiting list? Because if you have, I mean, with your numbers, it looks like we have, if we just divide it equally between the schools, about seventy per school. But is that accurate, or now you're saying you're trying to make it school-wide, so?
So, the heart of the Avid system is the elective, and we have Avid elective students that is an application and interview process. But the idea is that Avid elective trickles out, so every student is receiving the benefits from those WICER strategies. So, Avid elective students, they are identified through that application process, through that interview process, and then it goes on their schedule. But what's really important, as Dr. Smith was saying, is building on that professional learning. So what's happening in that Avid elective class is branching out into every single teacher's class, and students are receiving the same experience.
I I think one of the biggest components is that training for every teacher. Every teacher knowing what WICER is, understanding the strategies. Uh, yeah, at Salem, they have the twelve defensible strategies that focus on numeracy and literacy and all other content areas. Um, while we do have the Avid elective, teachers are trained in all these strategies to use across, and we do focus on on WICER.
Okay, well, yeah, that's great, because I think it's so, um, helpful, and I really like the goal setting, and and I like what one of you said. Um, opportunities for the academic middle, because a lot of times we'll have constituents to say, you know, you have so much for both ends of the spectrum, whether you have a learning challenge or a learning difference, whether you're gifted, but y'all don't offer anything to the middle. And so this is a perfect example of what we are offering for the academic middle. So, very good, very good.
The goal of Avid is acceleration for any student, regardless of where they are.
Where they land, yeah, yeah, great. All right, well, excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, just a reminder, we need to look at our time, because we have another presentation, um, in the health, mental health task force. But we have, um, three others, and so Ms. Franklin?
Okay, well, first of all, I think board members should actually participate in a class just to make sure we understand. Just so we can experience and understand, because I I could definitely use some of those organization strategies. But so, well, you had mentioned WICER, and I I didn't write fast enough. What is writing, inquiry, collaboration? What else?
Organization and reading.
Organization and reading, okay. And, um, so I, you know, one, I love the fact that we have a standard that we want to bring, you know, accelerate and, um, you know, help those those median students. How do we, what does that process look like in terms of the application? And how do we identify? Um, I I would love another presentation. I think this is very interesting at some point, just to kind of go a little bit deeper on the identification and the interview process.
Um, so, um, we do have a recruitment and selection process uh, that is, uh, sent out from the district level that all of our Avid site coordinators receive. And then, beginning in December, they start going and talking to students at their feeder schools with the application, and they also bring over other Avid students. The application and the interview process is more of a getting to know the child and making sure it is a right fit, but it's not a end-all, be-all, because we realize a fifth grader may never have had an interview before. So it's really about getting to know our students and making sure that the Avid elective is an appropriate fit for them.
Okay, well, this is great job to all of you. I'm, it's so impressive. So, I'd I'd love to hear more in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
And I just wanted to, um, make sure I heard right. Is there an Avid component currently in elementary schools?
We have four Avid elementary schools in our division.
And with it being, you know, primarily elective-based, how does that work in elementary?
It's the school-wide model. So, all students, um, receive those, uh, supports through WICER, and it's all school-wide. We do have, um, two teachers, K, uh, through two, and then three through five. That kind of leads some of that, but it is one hundred percent school-wide at the elementary level.
Awesome, and my last, I guess, comment is, uh, student speakers were wonderful. Um, and, uh, one of them mentioned that they have a parent who teaches for Avid, and so that helped to have a different perspective, uh, coming in. If there was any way that, uh, these students' stories could be captured, like in a little five-minute video that could go out to parents, so that when parents are seeing this as another elective on the the list to choose from, that they have an idea of what it is and that it's not like another study block, so that they can hear it coming from students, because I think it's very impactful to hear it coming from you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was fantastic, and I have a feeling we'll see you soon. Oh, I I had, I thought I had Ms. Anderson down there. Oh, sorry, Ms. Anderson. One more question, sorry.
So I just wanted to say that I did attend, um, uh, the, uh, Avid revitalization that they did a couple weeks ago at Great Neck. And, um, it it's contagious. The the atmosphere is contagious. I left there that day, I was like, I felt like I was on cloud nine. I was so excited about the program itself, and I wasn't able to stay for the entire day, but I'll tell you what, what I saw that morning uh, just revitalized me and what we're doing right in Virginia Beach. So I appreciate everything that you all do, you are doing, and, um, I feel like it's, you know, it's just one of those things that we need to get the word out there that it is how how helpful this is for our students.
Thank you.
And again, I think we all, um, should make time in our, um, schedules to to visit these schools. So, I'm asking Dr. Smith to set it up for us.
And Ms. Riggs, it's no accident that Ms. Franklin bought a new binder that I'm going to help her with today.
I'll see you afterwards.
Thank you again. Okay, we're going to see our mental health task force update. We're looking forward to this.
We all needed that, right? Like, that was, let them clear out. That was amazing. It was, uh...
Just want to say thank you also to all of our parents, family members who came tonight with our students. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Spread the word, parents.
And not to, we can definitely provide additional information in regards to the Avid recruitment process, as well as the application process. Um, each school, each of our secondary schools has an Avid court, excuse me, has an Avid counselor who participates in similar training that focuses on that recruitment effort, and we can share that information with you.
So, that, well, that's because, you know, with in Gift to CAC, they've got the Magliari and, you know, the, um, the, you know, the the system that they use to really observe, uh, students and and look at them. So, I I was just curious if that is very similar in terms when it comes to Avid placement or not.
Different set of criteria, but we can share that with you. All right, well, good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, uh, Vice Chairwoman Weems, Dr. Spence, and members of the board. My name is Robert Jamison, Executive Director of Student Support Services. Uh, we are here this afternoon to provide the board and community information pertaining to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Mental Health Task Force. As was shared by Mr. Delaney during the school board workshop on February twenty-eighth, the school division is committed to creating environments conducive to learning, as well as obtaining and allocating resources necessary to support students and staff. Directly aligned with our strategic framework and recommendations from the twenty nineteen Blue Ribbon Panel, the Mental Health Task Force aims to elevate and promote mental health and wellness for the Virginia Beach community. For today's presentation, we will review, excuse me, we will review current needs and challenges related to mental health, share the organizational structure for the Mental Health Task Force, provide updates on progress and accomplishments, and outline next steps for the task force. The data in the first three bullets on this slide come from the American Academy of Pediatrics. One in five youth experienced a major depressive episode in the past year. Seven percent of youth in Virginia have a substance use disorder, and suicide continues to be a leading cause of death in youth aged nine to eighteen. This school year, we are establishing a baseline for data related to suicide risk assessments completed in VB-CPS. The totals that you see on the slide in the table are through February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Since this serves as our baseline, we do not have comparison or longitudinal data, nor do we have specific details about these totals. For example, the totals on the screen may reflect, uh, may include, excuse me, a single student being counted multiple times. However, please know, moving forward, the Office of Student Support Services will work with the Office of Research and Evaluation to formally collect this information through school counseling departments and share this information appropriately. With this context, I would like to invite Ms. Stephanie Osler, Director of Mental Health from the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, to share data from their organization.
Good afternoon, evening, almost everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I did want to share, uh, we've been working in partnership with Virginia Beach City Public Schools for a few years now, and our program for supporting students in the middle and high school levels had has just launched this school year. Virginia Beach is our largest referral source for Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters. And our mental health program has been in existence, um, since about two thousand fourteen, our outpatient programming. We've expanded pretty significantly over the past couple of years. However, I did want to just point out that as far as outpatient referrals, about thirty percent of our referrals come from Virginia Beach, which is the most out of all of our seven cities. Um, so students from Virginia Beach are referred much more than than other students in other cities, and in fact, that's that's by double. Um, so pretty significant increase in numbers. Obviously, Virginia Beach lar- is larger. However, um, you know, about three thousand of our ten thousand referrals came from Virginia Beach this fiscal year, last fiscal year. In our emergency department, we see children in mental health crisis, and in fact, probably in the last six months or so, we have more children in mental health crisis in our emergency room than we do, uh, in medical crisis. And today, when I left to come to this meeting, I think we had fourteen children in our emergency department in mental health crisis. And this is not uncommon. This is becoming very commonplace. Um, in at in fiscal year twenty-two, um, which really encompassed, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, about five hundred of these, uh, two thousand and one hundred kids that we saw in the emergency department came to us from Virginia Beach, and that's significant in the numbers that we're seeing. We just opened our inpatient psychiatric unit in October, and we only have twenty-four beds out of our sixty beds open at this point um, due to staffing. However, we've seen in the just short period of time that we've been open, again, that thirty percent of those children are coming from Virginia Beach. So there is no better time to intervene. Uh, the pandemic really brought about a significant exacerbation in children's mental health conditions, and we are seeing this day in and day out through our referrals and in our emergency department. Um, it's our privilege to partner with Virginia Beach City Public Schools to help support students who have mental health conditions and need that support within the educational setting. So, thank you.
And now Ms. Osler may need to leave in a short while to support her child. If she's unable to remain for the end of the presentation, I can gladly take any questions for her and relay them back. I also, while she's here, want to publicly thank her. Um, our partnership has grown. I can't begin to tell you how, uh, how I can't begin to tell you how uh, how strongly over the last three years. And I really appreciate all the efforts of CHKD and Ms. Osler in particular in helping our students. So thank you, Stephanie. For the task force, uh this year again was comprised of students, parents, teachers, school board members, Mrs. Owens and Mrs. Weems. Community mental health service providers, community stakeholders, school administrators, counselors, and central office administrators. On the slide, you see the logos of the community organizations who participated. And much like I just shared with Ms. Osler, I want to take this opportunity to thank all participating members. Their hard work, dedication, passion, and willingness to contribute continue to be amazing. The task force is organized based on four common barriers to mental health. Access to services and supports, awareness of available resources, identification of students in crisis. And stigma surrounding mental health. The recommendations that emerged from the first year of the task force were then organized around these four barriers. The ten recommendations confirmed with the school board in August twenty twenty-one have been divided and grouped according to the barrier they address. For more detailed information regarding each recommendation, please see the task force recommendation document provided to you today. What you see on the screen is just a short uh overview of how these recommendations um are addressing certain topics. Related to those barriers as you see listed. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the task force continued our previous structure with four work teams aligned to one of the four identified barriers. The teams are led by staff from the Office of Student Support Services, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, and the Department of School Leadership. And our instructional specialist, Ms. Martha Crawford, has been taking on quite the uh, the load this year of leading this initiative. And I just wanted to thank her as well. She cannot join us this afternoon. On average, the work teams and work team leads led by Ms. Crawford meet monthly to determine the scope and direction of our work, as well as share any available updates. And now to get into many of the updates and accomplishments, we will begin with the access work group. The Return to School Plan of Action Meeting Tool is a document for school staff to use when a student is returning from a visit or a stay at a mental health facility. The meeting tool allows teams to focus on student strengths, discuss information obtained from the community service provider. And explore options to help ensure a safe learning environment for all students. The document was formally introduced to principals and school counselors beginning in January. And we will continue to be, and we will continue to share this document with other stakeholder groups this spring. The Student Support Services Response Team Protocol expands on the Emergency Response Plan coordinated by Security and Emergency Management. This document outlines the steps principals will take uh with support from Communications and Community Engagement, as well as school leadership. After the unfortunate death of a student or a staff member. More specifically, the document explains how to access the response teams who offer grief counseling and supports to our students. Over the past couple of years, we've also expanded not just the support for our students, but also support for staff. Through the Emergency Services Division from the city of Virginia Beach, and Cheryl St. John has been instrumental with having us being able to provide. Adult staff for our adult faculty and staff uh to, to support them during those difficult times. So our school psychologists, social workers, and counselors, which I'd like to publicly again thank for their efforts, they lead the support that's provided to students. And from a confidentiality standpoint, and wanting to realize that many of our staff, the loss of a staff member or colleague or a student is a tipping point. For what may be happening in their personal lives, we'd like to keep that barrier of using someone who, yes, is connected through the city, but not a colleague. Who would then learn about any financial stress, or, you know, the illness of a parent or a child. So there's a little bit of separation, and that's been well received amongst our staff to have that level of confidentiality. Moving forward to other pieces on the slide, the division is partnering with Child and Youth Behavioral Health Services of Virginia Beach. To offer rapid response services to elementary students and their families. And we are partnering with CHKD to offer a bridge program to secondary students. Both programs provide services to students who are demonstrating behaviors that may indicate the need for behavioral health screening, short-term intervention. Care coordination, or referral to ongoing services in the community. Since beginning on February sixth, we have processed thirty rapid response referrals. And since October twenty twenty-two, we have processed forty-seven CHKD Bridge Program referrals. And at the end of this presentation, I'll share a personal story connected to this work about the impacts of these kinds of programs. But I, not to break from the script, but I just, today I received an email from a principal. Who was just astounded by how quickly that rapid response really is working. It's within twenty-four hours that they are making contact with the student and their family. And then coming to the school to then do the assessment on the student to see what the needs are. Providing a verbal response to the parent that same day, and a written response within a week. And with consent, we then share that with the school, who can then make decisions to better support the student. And from a bridge program standpoint, again, at the end, I'll share a few more details, but just the immediacy of the support we're able to provide has been very uh impactful. I'm excited to announce that in the next couple of weeks, VBCPS will be partnering with CareSalus. To expand on our existing school support structures and bridge the gap to available mental health services. VBCPS staff will be able to use the CareSalus platform to easily submit referrals for mental health services. And at that point, CareSalus staff will navigate the mental health care system on our behalf and provide real-time updates on the progress of each referral. The experienced CareSalus Care Companion Team is available at all times, including nights, weekends, and holidays. They are able to speak in over two hundred-plus languages to explain options and coordinate care to families. And they use an aggregated database of over three hundred thousand providers. For an anonymous pathway to care, stakeholders will be able to use the CareMatch, a self-service tool, to find verified uh providers on their own. And additionally, VBCPS staff will be able to use CareSalus content with customizable messaging to help reduce stigma. Of mental health and promote help-seeking behaviors. Overall, this partnership, uh, excuse me, through this partnership, families will have direct assistance to navigate the mental hea- mental health care system. But I want to emphasize how CareSalus staff will help them find a provider, schedule an appointment, follow up after their first appointment. And ensure that their needs have been met. This is a resource that's available for any VBCPS student and anyone who resides in the household with that VBCPS student. This is also a resource that's available for any VBCPS staff member and anyone who resides in the household with that VBCPS staff member. So really excited to see the impact that this will make in terms of, and this works in conjunction with our Employee Assistance Program. This is not a replacement. We have been very much involved with them in these discussions, and we're excited to see this come along. The Awareness Work Team has focused on providing a variety of activities for schools in the community. For the coffee with the counselor at Betty F. Williams, the school counseling team met with current fifth-grade parents and guardians to review academic and career planning information. As it relates to selecting courses and for sixth grade. Then staff from the Kemp'sville Center for Behavioral Health presented information to parents about what to expect from adolescents as they transition to middle school. Presentations at Old Donation School covered how to talk to students about suicide and assisting students with managing stress and anxiety. And members of the awareness team, along with staff from Student Support Services, have been speaking regularly with student groups about mental health. These groups include the Student Athlete Mental and Emotional Health Group over at Princess Anne High School called Saint H. And we've also been meeting with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, as well as our Brickell Scholars at their seminars. To build awareness about resources available to staff, the Mental Health Task Force is supporting the Consolidated Benefits Be Well Program. By literally putting them on tour and linking them with the various staff groups to provide presentations on resources in the new Employee Assistance Program, or EAP. We had that presentation actually today with our high school principals. Our office and Student Support Services were continuing to host student interns from the Legal Studies Academy to expose students to the mental health careers available in our school system. As well as share with them different pathways to other mental health career opportunities. The Awareness Team is working with Community Engagement to provide a workshop series on mental health topics. And these topics will include depression and anxiety, suicide awareness and prevention, and how to have difficult conversations with students. These will be held uh through several, or led, excuse me, by several community partners, including the city of Virginia Beach, CHKD, and the Kemp'sville Center. As part of a partnership with the Virginia Beach City Public Library System, and I invite you all to come out on April twentieth. We've been engaging in career exploration work with them, where they have a chance to hear from local businesses and organizations. And they share what that job actually looks like, provides activities for them to learn a little bit more about that work. And on April twentieth at the Central Library, we will have the professionals from the field of mental health, if you would like to participate. And the picture on the slide is from the trip in February. To quote one Independence Middle School student, "This might be the best day I've had all year." Now, mind you, it was because they just gave him a Rubik's Cube, and he had never quite engaged with that before, but we'll take wins where we get them. So we appreciate that young man that made a smile for many of us. So the Identification Work Team wanted to increase the amount of professional learning offered to staff, and there are two activities currently available for all staff. The two topics include understanding student anxiety and depression, as well as a session on youth suicide. The sessions designed for school-based mental health staff are the youth mental health first aid trainings. And these professional learning sessions will actually be offered throughout the spring and led by our staff from CHKD. Athletic coaches and really any staff will be able to participate in the Question Persuade and Refer Training on March sixteenth. And that training will be led by Sarah Michelle Peterson Foundation, a local mental health nonprofit. And for those who don't know, QPR, Question Persuade and Refer, provides three steps anyone can learn to help prevent suicide. Through our Department of Technology, Securely provides a variety of filters and supports to help ensure a safe digital environment for our students. Securely staff alerts us when students submit content that suggests a threat to harm oneself or others. And during school hours, these threats or alerts, excuse me, are received and addressed by Security Emergency Management and school staff within minutes. After school hours, Security and Emergency Management staff have responded to these concerns twenty-four hours a day on nights and weekends, as well as holidays. As you can imagine, oftentimes, these situations require a qualified or licensed mental health provider to offer support. And as a result, VBCPS again worked with CHKD to offer after-hour support for any securely alerts of a mental health nature. So since February, CHKD clinicians have started contacting families when these alerts come in, so in response. Providing immediate mental health supports to students and ensuring families are connected with appropriate community resources on the spot. From a staffing standpoint, as you see on the screen, I just, again, I can't stress enough the thanks of uh in allowing. Additional staff coming in to our buildings uh to assist students. And the ten elementary student support specialists. We are wrapping up the interview process this week and plan on submitting names for those staff positions you heard about last. Board meeting to begin hopefully by the end of this month and prior to spring break. And as was discussed, thank you for your question from last time. The three behavior intervention specialists are moving us in that direction of having one behavior intervention specialist for every two elementary schools. The three won't put us there, but it definitely puts us closer. And in addition to that, we've been contracting psychological services from national agencies to help fill any needs that we have with significant staff shortage of school psychologists. So again, just wanted to share how we've been using some flexible options to ensure that our students' needs are met from a mental health standpoint. For our last work team, throughout the past two months, the stigma work team has been developing a survey, just an internal one. That would enable the group to capture how the current resources to address stigma are impacting students, staff, stakeholders, and families. The work team started by gathering input from work team members along with other stakeholders. And with this information, the team created a project scope for their efforts this semester, which includes several items, two of which I'm going to provide a few more details on. On January third, the team conducted the Interfaith Alliance Lunch, where faith leaders were able to discuss the mental health concerns in their communities. Kemp'sville Center for Behavioral Health discussed mental health statistics, provided a program overview, and introduced the other attendees that were present. Which represented a, a cross-section of mental health organizations in the area. These organizations had staff on hand to provide information about their services, and our goal is to offer similar sessions to families. Like the previously mentioned workshop series moving forward. On March sixth, through one of our new communication tools, SnapComms, a message was sent out to all VBCPS staff sharing details. From the most recent, and you need to be careful with this title, Life's a Beach Podcast, conducted by the Be Well Program. I did not choose that title, just want to be clear. In this episode, staff explored the intricate balance between work and life demands, discussed the importance of maintaining a healthy balance between the two. And how to achieve said balance. City and school leaders share how their practice, uh, oh, excuse me, how they practice work-life balance and how they encourage work-life balance with the staff that they lead. And so, wanted to share with you, and there was a second document that I provided to you in addition to the recommendations. And it's a list of services that many of our students, mental health services, that many of our students experience in the community. And I wanted that to be a backdrop, because when you hear, you know, a student's getting in touch with service, what exactly are those services? So for anything from an acute inpatient stay to intensive outpatient IOP, to a residential stay, partial hospitalization. That's where a lot of these resources about students coming back to us become so important. So that return to school plan of media, or excuse me, plan. The meeting tool that we have for it, Plan of Action Meeting Tool, excuse me. It's in those moments when a student's returning to us from one of those services, many of those services, crisis stabilization included. That we use that document to focus on the student's strengths and get them re-acclimated to school. But I wanna, I wanna share a quick story with you. This was three weeks ago, just after we actually launched the CHKD staff. Being the ones who respond to securely alerts. So it was a Saturday, and a securely alert came through. It was about. Roughly nine PM. I'm changing some of the details to protect the identity of the family, but it was about nine PM, we'll say. And in that, as you can imagine, the parents were a little caught off guard, being called by CHKD staff, and that's how these typically have. We have a script for how the conversation goes. And we shared with them what was just transmitted on a VBCPS device, which reached the alerter securely. They then sent us the message. We then responded roughly within about a fifteen-minute stretch. And in doing so, the clinician shared with the mom the concerns, and of course, as you can imagine, she said, well, he's right here. Speak with him, which is why it's so important to have that mental health provider in the moment. So she speaks with them, she gathers a few more details, she has the parent back on the phone, and she shares with the parent, you're gonna need to take him in to be screened. Um, there's, you know, just based on what he said, there's some concerning efforts, and let me go ahead and help you out. I'm gonna call the emergency department at CHKD and let them know that you're on your way to speed this process along when you arrive. So sure enough, she does, she gets there. It was very welcoming to see his name on the board, and that's me, that's us, we're here, we'll go. And in that intake process, they find out that the young man had a note. He had the means in his room. And his plan was to come, to die by suicide that night. As they take him in for his acute stay, crisis stabilization really, there was a, a discussion. That occurred about what would happen afterwards. And as they were having that discussion, there was this realization of, well, your child attends Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Well, you're gonna, they have a bridge program. So upon discharge, we'll go ahead and put that referral in for you to go into the bridge program as you're gonna get re-acclimated to school. As we found out just how things work in Virginia Beach, a large, big, you know, a large, small town. That mom ended up sharing just the situation with the VBCPS staff person who's connected to the task force. And the mom said, I can't believe all this happened. I've been waiting for nine months to get him into a program like that. And we were able to make that happen within a forty-eight hour span. So I just want to say thank you for supporting these kinds of initiatives, because you're saving lives. Um by supporting it, and I, I can't say it any better than that. So just thank you for your support of these initiatives and how they fit together to, to really put layers of support in place for our students and families. And in terms of next steps, we're gonna continue these efforts that were shared today, simply put. Uh, we have a meeting next week with ODU to explore even an additional layer with their practicum and internship students. So that perhaps next school year, under supervision from their doctoral uh staff, we can have students working directly with families. And working directly with students. They earn hours. Our students get support free of charge. We move that forward. We're also gonna look at their wellness clinic and seeing if those who have transportation could make it there if they need to speak with someone immediately. And again, that would be free of charge. Uh, we will, I have to look at Ms. Manning, but I remember in July. Landing page for Mental Health Services and Supports, the CareSalus Program, I hope will help fit that need that you shared that day of. Where can we direct families to go if they need assistance with, fill in the blank, from behavior management, ADHD, substance use. CareSalus has that level of connection, but we're also working with um communications. To build out a landing page for mental health supports in Virginia Beach. And then, of course, I think we may have changed, we're gonna have our Family Student Wellness Expo come back. Excited about that, if you watched. Our webinar last week on school safety. Um, this is something we had planned on conducting Saturday, March twentieth, twenty twenty. Sorry, Ma- March fourteenth, twenty twenty. We all know what happened Friday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, and so we never had a chance to conduct our expo, but we are working with. Several community agencies and will hopefully be able to make that happen first Saturday in June. And the idea of that Wellness Expo is bringing all of the different wellness activities, whether you run a spa, a gym, martial arts studio, whatever it is. Right next to those who provide mental health services in our community. They'd be in one space, try to de-stigmatize that, so you could be at. try to de-stigmatize that, so you could be at any one table. No one quite knows who you're listening to or getting information from in a non-selling environment. Imagine inflatables, outside, indoor, outdoor type of event. And we look to have that with conjunction of Parks and Rec, Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, CHKD, Kempstville Center, Child and Youth, and the list goes on. So with that, we'll be back in late June, early July to provide updates to the board, as well as senior staff. And at this time, available to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And I won't hold us up with comments, because they're not really questions. I just want to say that our presentations today in workshop have me, my heart just full between the avid students and this. This is really what I had dreamed of seeing when I came to the board. This was kind of my number one focus, and I, I love what has come together and what is continuing to build here. I don't know if people understand the, the true impact of the difference when you have a warm handoff in the referral process in terms of having that continuation and people not falling through the cracks. Stephanie Ossler, who's not here right now, is a rock star in the CHKD social work community. I've been working with her for more than a decade. And so I'm excited to see the, the different players that are on board here. This is truly making a difference, and it's really going to be the, the model standard, I, I would imagine, for, for the state and for the nation at some point. And so I'm incredibly proud of the work that you have spearheaded, Mr. Jamison.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate that.
As we all are. Ms. Wiems.
Yes, great job, of course. And I attended the meeting yesterday. But I just wanted to clarify this. So, Mr. Jamison, the, the Be Well, the EAP, which is Employee Assistant Program, Life's a Beach Pod, SnapCon, Con, CareSolus. That is for any employee. You don't have to be in our healthcare system at all. It's for any one of our employees, correct?
Any one of our employees, correct. Now, the SnapComms message, just to be clear, that's a communication tool, thank you, David, that we're able to, to leverage. We can send it to all staff. We can send it to specific staff groups. And we plan on having a regular routine of sharing information separate from email. Sometimes people don't quite get to email. The SnapCon pops up as literally a pop-up on your screen. So it just increases the access points for receiving the information, and we continue, we're hoping to share more information in the future that way.
Okay, because that's great. Because I, I think a lot of folks, especially with the Be Well, thinks they have to be, you know, on our healthcare plan and all that stuff.
Correct. Those, and that's exactly why we want to go out and share how there's so many different resources. Some do require you having certain benefits, and that's where SnapComms comes in, versus some are just available to anyone.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much today.
You've done some wonderful work.
Right.
And now I'm going to adjourn the workshop. We'll go into our recess.